This meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, January 27th. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. De.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Isaac? Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. De?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. All right. Mr. De, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
No. I pledge allegiance to our United States of America and to every father and daughter who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any comments tonight, other than welcome and thank you for being here. Dr. Whitley?
So, as you know, it is Board Appreciation Month, and so we just wanted to make sure to express how thankful we are for not only your governance and leadership, but also just you as individuals in our community, who help shine a positive spotlight on Lakota local schools. So there are things or items at your seats that are just a small token of our appreciation and our way of saying thank you for what you do each and every day for Lakota local schools, and specifically our staff and our students, and I'll say that for Adam and myself and the executive team as well. So again, very, very appreciative all year long, but specifically January is the month to highlight that. So again, thank you. Also, we would be remiss without mentioning that Deputy Doug Hale, our SRO officer today, it's his birthday, so we want to make sure that he is spending his evening with us on his birthday. So we just had to have a little shout out and love. I think he's avoiding me out there. But we could spend our, you know, he's spending his birthday with us, but we are actually the ones that are blessed by his presence. So I remember Deputy Doug very vividly as a teacher. Talk about just bringing a smile to children's face and a culture builder, funny, keeps our children safe. So again, happy, happy birthday. We're back in the swing of things with school. We're going to talk about, we've solidified our board, regular board meetings. We're going to talk about committee meetings a little bit later in the session. But at your station there, you will have the approved 2025 board meetings, both the work sessions and the regular meetings. If you remember, our work sessions will be switched to Tuesday morning, starting February 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Those still will be recorded, so that the public can watch those if they would like, and those will be happening at the central office in conference room D and E. And then our regular board action meetings will continue to be normally on the final, the final Friday of the, or the final Monday of the month, excuse me, regular time at 6:00 p.m. with listening sessions that you can schedule to speak at at 5:30, and they will still be here at Lakota East Freshmen. And then lastly, you'll see on the side, just to make sure we're all reading this the same, the agenda review dates, those are for Adam and Julie and Kelly and myself to do as we prepare for the meetings. So just, those are all just on one page, so that we can reference. And again, these have been linked in my board updates, and these are finalized. So this is one you put on the fridge, so that we can, that we can consult back to. And like I mentioned, we will get in the weeds with committee meetings just a little bit later, and make sure we have those dates solidified. So, thank you.
Great. Mr. Zink?
Okay, to echo everything Dr. Whitley said, I think she might have stole my, my words I was going to use. Seriously, though, Board Appreciation Month, appreciate working with all of you guys. Then you also see in front of you, this is what we're going to have attached into the, later on in the agenda, you'll see, in the committee section, and I did break out the board retreat. And anytime we don't have a location yet, I just put the location to be determined, or if we don't have the schedule yet, we'll work through that. So, that's all I have at this moment.
All right. Now we'll go to our student spotlight, where we get to recognize our Martin Luther King Day grand prize winner.
Good evening. On January 20th, our community joined together to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. at the 26th Annual Live the Dream, Our Declaration of Unity Celebration. This year's contest challenged students to choose one of Dr. King's lesser-known speeches, sermons, or readings, and share how it personally impacts them. Tonight, the grand prize winner in the fine arts category is with us to perform his original song, "Life's Blueprint." Please welcome Cherokee Elementary School 4th grader, Christian Mudd.
Okay, y'all can start it. This the premiere, thanking Dr. King for changing my life and other black people's lives, for fighting for equality. Y'all ready? Y'all gather around, listen up. Here's the story about a man who changed his world, the world in his glory. Dr. King had a dream, he said, he wants us to see that we all have value, no matter who we be, he said. Pursue your dream, go chase it down, no matter where from, no matter where found. He talked about dignity, all about worth and pride. He wants us to stand tall, neverless tight. We will still laugh up, we cannot live free. We can live our dreams, free and equally, rah! Life blueprint, yeah?
Yeah.
That's what he said. Be your best, give your dreams some crown. If you can run, then walk it through. If you can walk, crawl till you do. Keep it moving, don't stop the fight. You're somebody special, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your light. Aru, hu, hu. That's right? Y'all ready? Rah! Dr. King told us, be your very best in whatever you do, no need to second guess. If you're building, drawing, or solving math, do it hard. Let your passion lead the path. Black people got dignity, worth somebody's nest, no matter who you are. Don't settle for less. You're strong, you're smart, you're meant to rise, meant to rise. You've got a purpose, reach for the skies. I know you're reaching for the skies, right? Ah! Life blueprint, yeah?
Yeah.
That's what he said. Be your best, give your dreams some crown. If you can run, then walk it through. If you can walk, crawl till you do. Keep it moving, don't stop the fight. You're somebody special, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your. Don't let nobody tell you what you can achieve. Dr. King says, how to live, you must believe in your heart, inner soul, just keep your vision, keep the blueprints in your hands, your future's near. That was a lot of words. Y'all ready? Let's go, let's go, let's go! Life blueprint, yeah?
Yeah.
That's what he said. Be your best, give your dreams some crown. If you can run, then walk it through. If you can walk, crawl till you do. Keep it moving, don't stop the fight. You're somebody special, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your light. Shine your light, shine, shine your light.
Oh my goodness, that was fabulous.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Anyone have any questions?
Yes.
That's the, oh, sorry Doug. That's the second time, all right, we've seen this. I've seen it, Doug and I, we were at the Martin Luther King, and it gets better every time.
Wow.
It gets better every time we see it. Can you tell everyone in the board and the audience where you can find your music?
On Spotify, Apple Music, and YouTube. Make sure to, on YouTube, to subscribe, follow, and hit that bell. And on Spotify and Apple Music, make sure to follow me.
Definitely.
All right.
Yep. Yep, yeah. Tonight, I'm going to follow you, my friend. Going to look for you on YouTube, and I'm going to make sure that I'm one of your, your fans, and I'm going to share that with all my friends and my contacts, so that you have more people follow you. That's awesome. Thank you so much for inspiring us. Thank you.
That was incredible.
Thank you.
I'm in awe. Even more incredible than the rapping was the message that you sent with your words. That was very well thought out, and I'm just blown away.
Thank you.
Doug, is there anything else?
Again, I saw it the first time when the, when the district published the video, and then I was there on, on Martin Luther King Day, when you performed in front of the crowd there. Your showmanship is amazing, but again, the messaging and the way that you really took to heart the, the challenge for this year in the Martin Luther King Jr. writing contest was just really amazing. So thank you for, for engaging and sharing your talent with all of us and your message.
Thank you.
I'm curious how many other songs we're going to find on your Spotify channel. Is this something that you've been doing a while? Did this assignment inspire you?
We're working on more.
Okay.
We're going to have more coming.
Okay.
But...
So right now, is this your, your debut piece, is this song? Is this the first one you've done?
This is my first performance.
Or the first song you've written?
Yes, this is my first song I've written.
Fabulous, fabulous. Well, thank you again, as everyone else said. This was wonderful. We'd love to take a photo with you up front, if we could.
Sorry, I guess I didn't acknowledge you too.
My apologies. Val to come up.
Val?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, yeah. Crazy. I mean, yeah, he was, he was like, I figured out I could do it. I was like, what? I know, you can do that. Oh, I'm sure.
It was like the whole office.
That was awesome.
Nobody can top that, so whatever we do from here on is going to...
I know.
Downhill from here.
It's going to downhill from here.
Should we adjourn?
Let's just adjourn. We can't top that. Yes. I made a strategic error in putting myself on the agenda after that particular performance, so that was foolish on my part. But, okay, we'll get to the Butler Tech report. Butler Tech has been focused, as you may have read, in November. We got notice that the current superintendent is choosing to take an advisory role, starting next year, so we've been in the search for a new superintendent. We did have meetings last week, and we made good progress, and I hope that I will have something soon to report in that regard, but not yet. So besides that, our focus continues to be on the building of the two new facilities. As you can imagine, it's been a little challenging with the weather, not the best weather for building, but they did some remediation, so that they were able to still start the aviation hangar, and we're hopeful that that will stay on schedule. Finally, you may have read the article that was in the Pulse Journal. Butler Tech was fortunate enough to have three of the five U.S. Presidential Scholar folks nominated in the state. So out of five statewide, three were from Butler Tech, and of those three, two were also Lakota students. So, so we feel very fortunate to have that recognition, and again, just speaks to the hard work that all of our students are doing every day, and the recognition that we are so proud that they received. So, that's all I have for today. And, oh, luncheons have started at Cafe Lee. If you'd like to follow them, you can look at their social media. They put the calendar out to make reservations on Monday mornings. This year, more so than any other year, it is Fast and Furious. You better get in quick, or you're not going to get a reservation, because it continues to be very popular. So hopefully, everyone can make it to Cafe Lee. And I may send something out. I think the 20th and the 21st of February is a Lakota East student is co-hosting that, and so hopefully, we'll be able to get a table, and I'll find out which day works best for people, and we'll try to reserve something for that. So, we'll now move to facilities. Dr. Whitley, would you like to do a report on that?
So, we will solidify future facilities committee dates this evening during our upcoming conversation, but we recently met in master facilities, kind of at our normal time that we had established prior to winter break. Still some really rich, ongoing discussions, one of which is, again, around transportation. I think right now that really we are trying to balance customer service, which certainly transportation is part of, with also fiscal responsibility. But not all, not, I don't simply mean fiscal responsibility from the savings amount, but also, what does that look like in terms of programming? So for example, it's not just a pure savings. What might we be adding or losing in that discussion? If we add transportation, or if we don't have transportation? So it's that balancing act, prioritizing everything. We also have the, we talked a little bit about, as you saw in my board update, about the Paul Fallon survey. This will be a statistically representative survey that will go out to our community, a cross-reference of the community, again, that is statistically relevant, will receive that survey via phone. And basically, that survey will look at just what are the feelings of the operations of Lakota local school districts? What's the pulse of that? What are people's feelings about the need for master facilities? And then we are, we talked about in master facilities as well, about adding a question to that, about helping prioritize, what people might think is of benefit to the district now and going forward. So whether that's programming, transportation, needed facilities. Again, almost just ranking and priorities, so that we can then extrapolate that data out by demographic, to help us make some really long-term decisions about high school busing, particularly as we take the freshman campus into the main campus. So again, we are still really looking at that high school busing situation, knowing that it is a balancing of prioritizing what we need educationally, with also that customer service piece, continuing to look about that data. We got some data around current freshman busing, that was sitting at around 77% of freshmen are taking advantage of busing, although we are continuing to look at that number. At first blush, that seemed a little bit high to us. So again, just really looking at rosters and making sure that we're not looking at just the roster, but actually who is actually taking a seat on that bus in a consistent way, so that we can make sure that that percentage is accurate. So really, at the last meeting, we talked about the busing piece. Just, I think we're getting more clarity every time we discuss it. I don't think we've reached a final decision on that, but hopefully, the survey data, which was also a discussion at that meeting, will then just kind of help us, give us a holistic picture about where transportation falls and the priorities of this community, particularly, again, the high school aspect, looking at that. And then we also talked about our upcoming February 4th meeting, really going back to and talking about Central High School. If you remember, Central High School is not currently delineated on the master facilities plan. Not that we do not think that it is valuable and important at this time, but it just hasn't having a permanent home on that plan. And so we need to decide about the long-term vision of that, as far as placement. Is that a separate building? Is that attached to a building? Is that within a building, like a school within a school? So at our February 4th, I will be making each of you a packet, just around the schedule of that building, the enrollment of that building, the criteria to get in that, and its state report card, so that we can have the data to look at that. We also will be receiving the request for proposals from our architects. Those are due January 31st, as I mentioned in my board update. And the process of that will be in-person interviews. We think it is important to hear the details of those proposals in person, but also to get a feel of the personalities that we are working with, because that relationship will be so important. So the, the actual standing committee members on that, if you remember, are Julie and Kelly from the board. Although all other board members can attend that, we want to make sure that you're as engaged in that conversation as you can be with your, with your schedules. But with Julie and Kelly being the standing board members on that meeting, they will be the, represent the Board of Education on the interview team. But we will make sure to share out as much information from those interviews, as I mentioned in my board update, with all board members, so that you can be involved in that process, albeit maybe a little bit more peripherally, so that then we can bring that recommendation to the Board of Education.
It was a lot of robust conversation and a lot of critical thinking of, you know, when Dr. Whitley said at one point, she's like, I know we all want our cake and the frosting too, but we have to recognize, you know, what are those trade-offs, and what do they look like? And it really is hard, because there's no, in my opinion, there's no right or wrong answer. There's a lot of gray, and just trying to balance everybody's needs and programming needs, and recognizing the desire to keep costs at a reasonable, you know, what some would think is a reasonable level, others may not. So, lot to consider, and very hard decisions to make, in my opinion. So, anything else anyone wants to add from being there? Doug? All right. We will move to the committee dates, so have a conversation on our dates on the sheet that we have.
You have a draft sheet at, at your seat here. I think really, a couple finalizations need to be made. One, I want to just reference the Business Advisory Committee. If you remember, we had a change in staff, and the person that was kind of overseeing, they weren't overseeing the Business Advisory Committee, they were overseeing College Credit Plus. We had a change in staff in around October. And talking with the team, we really felt that maybe we could bring two worlds together with the Business Advisory Committee and College Credit, College Credit Plus work, because there is some just systematic similarities between those two. So we do have a staff member who came on board in January. It was helping us feel, fill the remainder of the year with College Credit Plus, but we are looking to potentially post a kind of more broad role for the 25-26 year that would encompass the Building Advisory Committee being the person that goes to the county meetings for that, making sure that these are building the partnerships and the internships and the externships from a more kind of data and systematic approach that we would couple with College Credit Plus. So this committee right here as a whole, will probably not have a robust meeting schedule at all this spring. We're really just looking to get that long-term person in, and then make that start fresh with the 25-26 school year, so that we have that really clear system, and how that is flowing from the Curriculum Department through this person, and then back to the regional counties that we connect with in our local community. So that's why there's no dates there. That is intentional, that is, will be to come in 25-26, and when we get that staff member in place, like I said, will we revisit these dates. As far as the Facilities Committee, we had originally talked about the first and third Wednesdays of the month, keeping that same cadence that we had started with in the fall from 1 to 3. However, in thinking about that, we just wanted to, to continue to talk about that, if that was the best time for the community. I know Isaac had mentioned that Wednesdays and Thursdays are really hard with his schedule. Doug had, had also weighed in and said perhaps moving it to the fourth Wednesday would be better for him than the third Wednesday. So with that, we potentially have three different proposals to discuss. We could keep it on Wednesdays from 1 to 3, but it would be the first and the fourth Wednesdays of the month. The reason we can't move it up is because really it would be back-to-back meetings. So your work sessions, you wouldn't have, you would have a very, very quick turnaround time. So really, it would be the first and the fourth, rather than the first and the third. Or, because Isaac said Wednesdays and Thursdays aren't really great for me, right? We could move it to Tuesdays. Now, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, that's why we're bringing it here, right? With different work schedules and different just life schedules. So with, on Tuesdays, we could do it after the, the morning work session, so a flow-in from like 7 to 9 work session, and then master facilities could be 9 to 11, realizing that that's a pretty big chunk of the morning, right, which might be beneficial, might not. Or, we could have the work session in the morning from 7 to 9, everybody go back, you know, go their separate ways, do their, do their worker life, and then come back for master facilities from 1 to 3 on Tuesdays. Does anybody have a preference of those that would be more beneficial for their schedule? Again, Julie and Kelly are the standing members of that committee, but we want to make sure as many voices can be at that. We, we strive for a quorum there. Doesn't mean we have to have that, you know, if Julie and Kelly are just there, but we think of the more people involved in that conversation just helps us all be in the loop. So we didn't know if keeping that on Wednesdays, or possibly looking at Tuesdays would be more beneficial.
So would it be the first and third Tuesday?
It would be the, the same as the planning meetings. So the board work sessions, it would be these exact same dates.
So only once a month then, and not twice a month? Because the planning sessions are only once. I thought it was, yeah, we were going to do the first and the third.
Yes, it would be the first and the third.
So it would just be the...
Because the planning meetings are the first.
Yeah, the work session days would be the only day that it would be the continuum, the third one you wouldn't have to worry about.
Thank you for catching that.
It being so continuous.
Yes, it would be the first and the third.
So the third one, the third what Tuesday would be, 1 to 3?
It could either be 1 to 3, or it could be 9 to 11, or I guess it could even be 7 to 9.
That's the comment I'm trying to make. I know you're trying to accommodate me, for me, if it is convenient for everybody. If we do that Tuesday, I know that I'm coming from 7 a.m. to 11:00, I can take the day off, at least. And then Tuesdays are not my meeting days. So it works perfectly for me. But Wednesdays and Thursdays are meetings that I cannot control, my bosses and, I meet with higher on those days. So, so I don't mind if it is convenient for others. If we do it on a Tuesday, I don't mind combining it from like, I know from 7 to 11 a.m. that day, it's not going to be a...
What about that third Tuesday, then? Would you, would you want the 3, or would we do it morning?
If I'm going to pick that, that's, the week that I pick, that I would prefer to do, do it at once.
So on that second one, 9 to 11 would work for you still on a Tuesday, Isaac?
Yeah, either the, the second or the third.
Okay.
If I'm, I'm going to take one for that week.
Okay.
I mean, for, yeah, for that period, I don't mind combining it from 7 to 11.
Would it be easier on that third week, for the second meeting in the month, to be 7 to 9?
Or 9 to 11, which would be more convenient for you, Isaac?
So, that means...
Because the second one, we wouldn't have the planning.
Because the second one, we don't have a planning. Yeah, that, I can pick the third one, yeah, that's fine.
Would you do 9 to 11?
I can do, no, I can do 7 to 9, you said, right?
Okay.
That's perfect.
7 to 9, or, okay.
Yeah.
So what I just heard was, the first meeting would be 9 to 11, which is after the planning meeting, and then, or the work session, and then the third would be at 7 to 9 a.m.
Oh, we need to let two more people weigh in.
I could make that work.
Okay.
Christina?
That's fine.
Okay.
So, so that essentially, what that does is, so the first Tuesday, we will have meetings, one for planning, one for facilities. It'll last from 7 to 11. The third Tuesdays, we will just have the facilities. That will be 7 to 9, is what I'm hearing, right? And then, but then we also have...
The only, the only thing I might pause on that is because, remember, master facilities involves outside...
Yeah, that's what I was...
People, right? Work people, whether that's architects, whether that's OFCC folks that might have to be at the table, 7 to 9, most organizations that aren't, that isn't their operating hours. So it might behoove us to have 9 to 11 for that second. Again, we're early bird risers, but I don't, not, most organizations are, don't have that, you know, don't keep that time. So it might be beneficial on that third one to look at 9 to 11.
I can do 9 to 11, does that work for...
Does that work for you, Isaac, on that third one?
Yeah, yeah. On Tuesday, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Does that work for you, Doug and Christina?
Okay.
So then we'll be consistent with the facilities meeting, again, for other people. That'll probably be a little easier, then they're both 9 to 11, the facilities, first and third Tuesdays.
It's much easier to notice also.
So we will, we will add those to this. And then, once we get this populated, I'll put this in my board update this week as well, so we all have the same dates, before we put those on calendars.
And then last one's the Finance Committee, and now that we have these other dates, let me overlay the big map now, and I'll get with you guys to let you know when we can do that, and see if that works around your schedules. That way, we're not too inconvenient.
Are we doing policy and community engagement?
Yes, same day.
The same, like we always have?
Mm-hmm, same cadence. Does that work for everyone? Sure, I'm not on those committees, but... Kelly, Christina, does that work for you, Doug?
All right. Well, good, thank you for bearing with us through that administrative piece. Glad to have those settled. It's like a moving, it's always a little challenging.
Calendars are always interesting, right?
Calendars are challenging.
Yes.
All right, and now we'll go into administrative reports, and back to Dr. Whitley.
So as you know, all fall, I did listening sessions, really with any stakeholder group that, that I could hear from, right, from staff, students, parents, community, support organizations. In total, we had 96 listening sessions this fall, and then we had six secondary listening sessions as a follow-up. And what a secondary listening session is, it just means that there were so broad of themes that came to the surface during the initial listening sessions, that we needed to just do a really deeper dive to make sure that I was hearing about the strengths and the growth areas. So those secondary listening sessions focused, and those are still ongoing, but again, those are not going to be in that ethnographic data, because they're secondary, right? They're very nuanced. Those are with counselors, K6, and 712, special education, both intervention specialist and special education aides. So those aides that are paraprofessionals that work directly in our special education populations, and then also our English language learner populations with staff, so K6 and 7 through 12. So it's really interesting to be having those secondary listening sessions at the same time that we're having community conversations. Those are really, really complementing each other quite nicely. But of the 96 listening sessions, and I'm giving you an overview, so I will get very, very much in the detail, which I love, the devil's in the details. I will get in the details of that on February 4th, and I'll give you a full presentation of that ethnographic study, but I did want to give you an overview, just kind of the 96 thing, 96 listening sessions and kind of the themes that came to the top. So again, when you do an ethnographic study, this is not everything and all that I heard, but it's those things that consistently rose to the top in the areas that show us what we're doing well, and perhaps what we don't want to adjust, but then maybe some areas where we have some growth areas that we need to look into and talk about, particularly with strategic planning or master facilities. So I'm not going to break these into groups right now for you. I'll do that in the more detailed version. But in the strengths that I heard about, I heard about our staff. Almost all listening sessions started with, we have caring staff who build relationships with children. Almost every single one. And from our students, from our staff, from our community, everybody said you have staff that just get to know children, they want to meet children where they are, and they want to help children. Not only in learning, but just in life. So to hear that brings a smile to your face, right? Educator or not, that you have people that care about your children. The other thing that I heard loud and clear is that we are very, very proud of our diversity, of all of our various demographics. And in fact, I remember in all of the junior high listening sessions I had with children, they said, "We love our diversity and in fact, we wish we celebrated it more." I love to get to know about the different cultures sitting beside me and with me, and they highlighted really the different cultural events or diversity celebrations that they had in their building and how they like to just get to know their peers and form those relationships. And we even heard that from the community, that diversity is one of the things that makes us strong. I think people understand that our demographics are changing, but they do not view that as a negative. They view that as a positive and that we are a microcosm of the larger community, our state and the world. The other thing I think that brought a smile to my face, it is very, very, very specific to the student voice, high school and junior high, although I did meet with two, three, six groups as well, was that overall, our kids felt that, that our students are pretty nice to each other. That we feel like that we belong, that when you're the new kid, right? That there's groups that you can connect with and that you can find your interests and that you can grow your interest. And so in having such a school, a large school district, I often heard the message, even though we're large, we make us feel small. We, you know, we connect with people. And particularly to hear that from children, and I have a junior high student, that is not an age where you often hear that kids are nice to each other sometimes. So to hear that from our collective student body, bodies that, you know, not always, I didn't say all, but for the most part, we just have very student community groups that are caring, which mirrors the adult communities, which is just wonderful. Growth areas. The growth areas, interestingly, were pretty specific. There are some unique aspects from K-6 or from 7 through 12. But overall, and again, we'll talk about these infinesties out more in the February 4th conversation, but I heard a lot about specials. Maybe in the 7 through 12 world, we call them electives, but I heard a lot about that. In the K-6 world, I heard about the specials rotation that we used to have before the previous levy cuts and before those things. And just the idea about the whole child. Are we really educating the whole child? Do we have an opportunity to bring back a more consistent five-day-a-week rotation of specials? And then there was lots of robust dialogue about what those specials might look like. And we can talk about that on February 4th. But people had wonderful ideas, which are really exciting when you think about venturing into Master Facilities because you want to make sure that we build the spaces that we need, depending on the programming, going back to that transportation conversation that we want to have. Also, again, particularly in the, also in the 7 through 12 though, again, we call them electives more so than specials. I think children, the strongest voice was, with children and staff, was just to make sure that we continue to evaluate our course offerings to make sure that there's student interest, student voice in those. With, from a staff perspective, we talked about the new course proposal and how we might have a little bit more buy-in from staff and a little bit more opportunity for them to get involved in that process. Not that they aren't, but it could just be maybe a little bit more robust. From a K-6 narrative, there were a lot, particularly from parents and staff, but more so from parents, about class size. They understand that we have the guidelines that we, you know, that we've discussed in enrollment all fall, but they say that they feel a little heavy. That when we start out well, maybe at the start of the year, but as enrollment continues throughout the year, sometimes those creep up into numbers like 25, 26. And just a question, is that the number that we want for the most personalized learning, individualized learning, and how that changes classroom dynamics, especially with our younger learners, with things like procedures, classroom behaviors? So again, our staff are doing a great job building those relationships, and I think the question was, what if we had smaller class sizes? Imagine what that could look like even then. So I think that's a discussion for us to have, particularly as it's a philosophical conversation, lots of research about class size that we can also look into as we go down that journey, but particularly from K-6 class size. We also, we, I, heard a lot about equality versus equity. And this was more about, this was more a community voice, although there was a staff piece there and a parent piece there, but I think the larger community from a outside and parent perspective was that we tend to, and I'm making this statement being new, right? Ethnographic data is taking in the data that you hear and just taking it, not judging it, just taking it, right? I think the voice was that oftentimes everyone gets the same, right? So the east side of town gets exactly what the west side of town does, or you might have all of the elementaries get the same staffing, or all of the elementaries get the same, or all of the junior highs. And while I think people understand that method, I think there's a wondering, a wonder about, well, what if my demographic's different? What if I have a larger building? How does that play into the discussion, whether it's equality versus equity, particularly around staffing? I think the staff voice was really loud about, you know, if I have a junior high of 800, does that need the exact same staffing model as a junior high of 500? And if there is a different staffing model, do we have the criteria, or I call them thresholds, to have a really consistent conversation around that so it doesn't seem willy-nilly, right? That there is a system, so it's not a personal decision or maybe a preference decision, but there really is a system to have those in place. So I think it was a wonder, and then if we're going to do that, embrace more of the equity versus equality piece. I want to make sure we have a system that feels like that there is thought and process behind that. And then lastly, from a staffing piece, from our internal staff, I think there were just questions about our staffing model, and all of that ties together around specials, around class size, around that kind of equality versus equity piece. I think there's just some staffing questions there, which again, did not surprise me considering some of the bigger growth areas that were discussed. And then last but not least, so my three questions again were, you know, what are our strengths, what are our growth areas? And then I specifically asked, being new to the district in this role, was what does support look like from the superintendent role? I do think people were a little shocked that, at least with staff, I shared my cellphone number with everyone, right? In a large district, sometimes, sometimes my role can seem distant, right? And that is not the type of culture that I want to have. And so I think people are adjusting to having that number in the best way. They're using, sometimes I get pictures of just children in the random day doing something fun and it brightens my day. And sometimes I get some constructive criticism that we need to hear and dive into, or just some thought-provoking questions. So that's very helpful. But I think really what I heard loud and clear was just that they appreciate, and the support from a superintendent would be just continuing to listen, or they appreciate being a new superintendent, that maybe you come in and you listen and you have listening sessions, that that be ongoing, maybe a different cadence than 96 in one semester, but they would like that listening piece. But they were not shy in saying, "I want you to listen, but we also want action," right? So there's a time for listening, but there's a time for doing, right? And so we appreciate all that listening and we want it to be ongoing. But as Doug often says, keep the momentum, right? Keep that action going, keep, keep things happening. And then also, and I think this is just a byproduct of the last couple of years, is the support around the narrative around our district. Making sure that we share a very positive story, that we partner with the media whenever we can to shed all, shed light, shine the light, as Christian reminded us, shine the light on all the positive things that are happening in this district, and to really make sure that we partner as a community and with the media and beyond to kind of shift that narrative into the new thread that we would like it to be at Lakota Local Schools. So again, that was a very big overview. We will get into the details and engage in really rich dialogue on that on February 4th, but I have enjoyed each and every listening session. I actually had a listening session, a parent mentioned it actually, one of the other listening sessions, and said, "Did you have a listening session with subs, our daily subs and our long-time subs?" And I was like, "No," but that would be really cool, and we did that just recently, and the turnout was amazing, and their feedback is just, it's going to make us better, right? Just some systems and some feedback. And so I think we really did a good job of getting a cross-section of all of the different groups in our community, and so I think we have some really rich data to build some action steps on after listening, but to keep that listening going as we go into the spring with strategic planning.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Whitley today?
Yes, I have a question on, where did the, I don't know, who initiated the conversation of equality and equity? Where did that start coming from?
That actually, so I just asked the three questions to each group, and that is my interpretation of their words, right? So they talked a lot about just, we have a very consistent way of doing things across each building, so I'm going to use, I'm going to use staffing, Isaac, as an example. So we might say that each junior high needs, and I'm just throwing out numbers here, each junior high needs two administrative assistants, right? And this building might have 500 children, and this building might have 800 children. And so the question becomes, why does the 800 building, the children, or the building of 800 have two administrative assistants when they might need three? Is it because everyone else has two administrative assistants? Or it might be the idea of, you know, the east side of town has this elective, do we have to have the very same elective on the west side of town? Or can we have some variance, right? And it was just a really good dialogue, you know, I'm going to pick, I'm going to pick on the elective of the spark, right? We have spark on the east side of town. We really don't have an equivalent of that on the west side of town. Is that okay? That seems to me more equitable for some people, where in other areas, we're very much about almost like a cookie cutter approach. And I think there's just some people grappling of like, what is our philosophy? How do we decide that philosophy? In what areas do we do it one way versus another way? And again, if it's not just that cookie cutter approach, do we have a system that is really well thought out to say when you need a new staff member, or when that elective might deviate from one particular high school to another? So I think it's more of a conversation about alignment, right? Alignment and thresholds. And again, not saying that that voice is accurate or inaccurate, but just making sure that that voice came through in the threads that came out from the community. I would definitely say those were more staff and parent threads than like student and community threads, although it did come up a little bit with athletics from a community piece.
Okay, let's use sparks as an example, very simple one. We have sparks in east and we don't have sparks in west. Who, whose initiative was it to have sparks in east? Was it the school authority or is it the students that initiated that?
So that's just one example, and I'm sure that...
Let's use that as, let's use that as an example.
It could have been twofold, Isaac. I'm assuming that there was a staff member who had a talent and an interest in that, and you had a student group who had talents and interest in that. And they came together and you had the formation of a wonderful class, right? And so I think that's the question of, what if you don't have that on the opposite side of town?
Exactly.
But you want alignment, what does alignment mean?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, that's where we're, we're going to be going to, we're going to get it wrong. If the students in west have that initiative to say, you know what, we want to also step up and have our own jour, what do you call that, maybe?
Journalism class?
Journalism team and start writing, then, that is their initiative. If they bring that forward, then we'll now say, okay, let's go ahead and, and see how we can get that happen. But to say that because east has and west doesn't have, oh, let's try to balance it out, that is where we're going to be, we'll start making mistakes. And that is where some people like me don't believe in that. Because, I'll be honest with you, I love being challenged. I love stepping up, try to make myself better when I see other people doing stuff. I would never want anyone to give me anything on anything, on platform. Let it be that it's initiative of the person that is trying to better themselves. Let it be that way. If we do it that way, we're going to be successful. But if we're just going to do it because we're going to balance it out, I'm not sure it's going to be successful.
And I think, I think that's the question, right? And we'll have that conversation as a team, right? When you say alignment, right? Sometimes people interpret alignment as very, very similar across the board, right? I mean, I know of school districts in this state, when you say aligned, you can go into every fourth grade classroom on the same day and they are learning the same lesson in the same order, lockstep, right? I'm not, I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm saying those exist. And so I think our conversation as a Board of Education is what is our philosophy about that, right? Because that impacts things like staffing, curriculum offerings, maybe even transportation, like all of those things come into play. And so I think really taking that feedback and saying, what do we prioritize for our school district and the governance of our school district so that then we can build the most robust arms around strategic plan that we can in collaboration with our community is really going to lead us into that next direction. So we don't have any answers on this. I think this is for us to bring to the table to discuss and get our feelings as a Board of Education, as a school district around some of the themes that we heard.
I'll just share some of the feedback that I've gotten from people who've attended the listening sessions. And so, one, thank you for running the gauntlet of 96 listening sessions plus six. To a T, everyone who's provided feedback to me has said that they've learned something from those listening sessions. They learned other perspectives from other people who attended them. They appreciated, you know, you listening as well as being available. But it was interesting because even people I know very well, you know, were understanding different perspectives within the same groups, especially the east versus west type of thing. They didn't realize that their experiences were different even though they were in that same kind of grouping and stuff. So I think it was a really novel and interesting approach and a great way to start to wrap our hands around the various perspectives that we have in the district. It is easy to sit on the Facebook page and listen to the same six comments over and over. And it's just, since I've been on the board for a year now, it has been amazing how different everyone's experience is in our district because we're so large, and how easy it is to miss those experiences and perspectives. So I think this is a great start. I'm really excited to see the detail and get in the weeds and really use that as impetus for us to work on our strategic plan. So, thank you.
Anyone else have anything before we move to February 4th? Again, just thank you so much for your time and investment. I've heard nothing but positive feedback and appreciation that you chose to go out and make sure you did listen to groups that have not felt heard. And so we really appreciate, I know that was a big lift of time and energy when there were a lot of other things to focus on as well. So we're very appreciative of all the time and making sure that you are coming at this not just from your own perspective, but with the perspective of so many different stakeholders in this district who do care passionately about the future of Lakota. So thank you for that. So, nothing further. We'll move on to Treasurer's Recommendations, A, 7A and B, approval of board minutes and approval of monthly financial reports. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have Superintendent's Recommendations, A, A through D, personnel, the approval of an assessment for a water main between Lakota and the Butler County Commissioners, approval of field trips, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We'll do Christina this time, and Doug is the second. Any discussion on any of those?
Yes, what's the, what is B stands for?
They're basically just putting in some, some water mains behind Lakota East freshmen to help the water pressure. This is just kind of in the normal flow to help that pressure of the water, to make sure it's flowing. So nothing out of the ordinary, just kind of some normal upgrades to the system.
I had to look up the word, and now I was afraid to pronounce it, so I didn't read it when I was going over it. I looked up the definition of pertinences. It's like, eh, that's a new one for me for a while. I don't know that I've ever seen that before, anyway. So, yes. Any further discussion on that?
It's a different item, but I noticed quite a few resign, retirements, and so we're starting to get that list, and every year, it makes me a little happy and sad at the same time. So a lot of great people reaching that great milestone, so.
We, yeah, we are preparing for, you know, you're always preparing for a busy hiring season, but we knew when the retirement law was changed to 33 years that that would certainly have an impact, not only on Lakota Local Schools, but regionally. So we're just trying to make sure that we can be ahead of that, but then also making sure, Julie and I were recently, recently talking about this, that we celebrate those folks who have just spent so many wonderful years with us and give them their heart and soul to Lakota Local Schools, so making sure that we have the proper celebration to send, So making sure that we have the proper celebration to send, to send them off to a happy retirement.
I know we don't typically call out individuals who are retiring, because we're grateful for the work that everyone does. But I noticed on tonight's that Scott and Susan Smith are both on the retirement list.
I saw that.
And I, for those of you that don't know, they met at Hopewell Elementary.
Yep.
And have taught together in the same building their entire career.
Those are those Lakota lovebirds that I've heard about.
Yes. Yes. So seeing those retirements starting to pop up, and seeing people that have spent their entire career, and even less than their entire career, and put their heart and soul into our students is, it's sad to see that them, all of them, on the list. But also, it's exciting, because they've really devoted their whole life to us for this long, and now it's time to focus on some others.
Have some fun.
So congratulations to all of our retirements that we're about to approve.
Great. All right. Any further discussion on anything else? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. With closing comments, I'm actually gonna start with Mrs. Casper, so all those ideas aren't used by the time they get to you today.
Oh, wow. The pressure. Okay.
I should've warned you, sorry.
That's okay. Well, first of all, thank you to Dr. Whitley and Mr. Zink for all our gifts and our, your appreciation. Like you said, we do this job because of the love that we have for the district. So we appreciate being appreciated, so thank you. One of the things we did talk about under committees was community conversation. We had our first ELL community conversation on Wednesday, Nepalese. And while it was small in attendance, it was, I thought, a robust conversation. We had a family, older brother, a dad, and a younger brother, and they talked about their experience coming here. I think they came from Northwest School District, and the difference in, you know, what the offerings we have here. And the older brother, who, twenties maybe? Was very appreciative that we were doing community conversations for ELL families, to the point where he asked if he could come to the other languages. We're like, sure, you know, come along. But, I mean, even though it was small, I felt like they, there was a lot of good, good feedback and good conversations. There was a, a, a parent who spoke no English, so the translator really came in handy, and she had a lot of questions and just, she had a lot of good feedback for us on someone who doesn't speak the language, and how hard it is to her to relate to what her child's academics are. So that was, that was nice. East-West game on Friday, always fun, full house, lots of activity, lots of, it was hot in there. It was really hot in there, and you get all those people in that ship. But it was nice, I loved that we did girls varsity at 6:00, and then the boys varsity at 7:30. It's nice to be able to see boys and girls back-to-back. East dance team went to state this weekend, and came away with first place in all categories. So they will be going to Nationals in two weeks to represent.
That was the field trip approval.
That's one of those, we just approved that. So they, yeah, they won both categories, so that's kind of exciting for them. So I think that's all I have. Wow. So fun. Mr. Zink.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the East-West basketball game also. We were able to make it for the second half of the girls' game, and about halfway through the first quarter of the boys' game, until both the little, both the little guys fell apart, and we had to get out of there. But how cool was the intros?
Oh, yeah.
And that is also going to be installed at East, so, you know, we'll have that at both sides. And I was also told that that doesn't make us special, that we were like, kind of late to the game on getting those, but I thought that was extremely cool, so.
It's like a college game.
Yeah, it felt, it was very, very neat, so that was a pleasant surprise. That's all I have.
Dr. Whitley?
You know, I keep going back to the words of Christian that we heard, where it says, shine your light, right? When you talk about literal, East-West like game, right? Or figurative, the impact that you have on other people, whether that's as Board of Education members, whether that's as a teacher, executive team member, SRO, whose birthday needs to be celebrated today. You know, we do really have an opportunity each and every day to shine our light. And I just think about what powerful words from a fourth grader that we can all take into our existence each and every day. So it was a message I think we all could just really appreciate tonight.
Thank you. Mr. D.
Dr. Whitley, thank you so much for some of the work you do that we, I am not even aware that you're keeping to your, your plan. You know, when you came on board, you gave us plan, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, and I can see, we're getting those reports as you go along, which means that they weren't just for interview, but you really mean it. So I look forward to how we're gonna end the, this year, and what's gonna come out of it. Thank you so much for that. Our SRO, we thank you for, even though it's your birthday, you are here today to make us feel safe. So I really appreciate that. And to my fellow Board members, I think this new, this year, we're gonna have a good time, you know, good planning, and I look forward to greater things that we have ahead of us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Horton?
I definitely wanna start with happy birthday to Deputy Doug, absolutely. And then, there's gonna be some, some other things here. Again, the shout-out for the East-West game. The innovation with the, with the court lighting is neat, and that's a testament to the boosters that, that both Lakota East and West have done on their fundraising, which, you know, we see every week, or every month in the, in the donations. Just really strong parent organizations that fuel those, those innovations, that make everything just a little bit more exciting. You mentioned the fact that it was girls and boys both playing on Friday nights. That's actually the fourth time this year for East to be able to play that, and it's a growing trend in Ohio. And I really wanted to give a shout-out to Jill Myring, and the staff, and Coach Wallace, who really worked with other districts to be able to change schedules to make those, those meetings happen. What I've been able to observe is that it's interesting, not only do the girls get more recognition and people in the seats, but the boys are too. And that's really exciting to see that, you know, everybody's benefiting from it. So I'm excited to see that trend continue and grow in the future as we move forward. I wanna give a shout-out to Lakota East Theater, as they had 12 Angry Jurors this week, this past weekend, and they were sold out so far in advance that I didn't get to see it. And, and this isn't one of the spring musicals, or the fall musical, this is a straight play, this is the hard-hitting drama and the depth of winter, and they're selling out seats. And it's just a testament that, you know, we talk about the sports a lot, but our arts organizations are thriving here in Lakota, and it's really, really neat to see. And then going back to, I, I do wanna take a moment to just speak to something that I've seen after a year here. Both us as a Board, and, and thank you to Dr. Whitley coming in, as we've tackled different challenges over the past year, what I've really appreciated is the fact that we're not just doing gut reactions and, and listening to one voice, but we're really seeking to understand and using a data-driven approach. So whether it's busing, or whether it's master facilities, or it's even the listening sessions, I'm always really pleased to get the data to really make sure that we understand the problem before suggesting solutions. And that's a different approach than I've seen in the past. So I just wanna thank my fellow Board members for, for coming on that journey. It's been really neat to see, and I think we've been getting positive feedback on that, on how we've handled things. And then going back to the East-West game, I, you know, everyone's aware, but it was really cool to see the seven players who played in the champion, the college football championship game, recognize that seven Lakota students who went on to play at both Notre Dame and Ohio State. And it was a really special moment, and you could see everyone coming out and remembering that, so. And, and what I'll say is, you know, obviously, sometimes it hurts to lose, but when you lose to somebody who winds up winning the national championship, it's a very, very nice thing. So with that, I...
Is it my pie?
Have a steaming hot pie.
Oh, wow. Seven forks.
Don't burn yourself.
Seven forks.
And, and depending on how long our executive session goes...
Save that for executive session.
So hopefully, hopefully you can take it home, and you don't have to worry about it, but authentic Texas pecan pie, home baked for you, so.
For those who missed it, there was a wager issued at a prior meeting with the Texas and Ohio State game. So this is, this is the result of that wager. So it would've been Buckeyes the other direction, had the Texas and Ohio State game not gone this way, so.
I was confident I would not have to make Buckeyes.
I thought may have been confident as well. All right.
Yes, yes, yes. It's a pecan pie.
All right. Mrs. French?
I was hoping you were gonna come around this way, so I wasn't last, and everything had been said, but I guess we all have to take our turn.
You have to get to go first.
I know. I'll take it, I'll take my turn last. Thank you for these wonderful gifts and for recognizing us. Being a member of this Board only for a few months has been really, really rewarding, more so than any gift I can be given. To be able to do this work for our community and for our students and our staff has just really been a blessing on my life. So thank you for the gifts, thank you for recognizing us. Also, thank you for taking your time to do all of these ethnographic studies. I think it's been a really long time since our community has truly felt heard, and I, I gather from the feedback you shared with us tonight, and I know there's a lot more to come, they're finally feeling that way, which is so important to really creating that positive environment for all of our students to benefit from. And what I'm most excited about is to see that action from all of those things. You know, we can sit and we can talk about it all we want, we can share our thoughts all we want, but to really take the action, and that's what makes people feel heard, is to see that there is a result from the things that they're saying. So I'm really excited to hear more. The East-West game, everyone talked about it. I have a little bit different of a perspective. It was amazing, it was hot, it was fun, the lights were awesome, the intros were great. I brought my brother and my niece to the game. My niece is a second grader at Wyandotte, and they had never been to any East-West event. So I've been to tons, I called him, I'm like, you should come, you should see this. Like, this is something that is really, really cool. And so he came and brought my little niece and had a great time, and afterwards, he said, you know what's really cool about that? Is that there's no other district that gets to celebrate that time together. It's such a unique thing to have that opportunity, to bring our, our whole community together in a way that, yeah. And I, I hadn't really ever thought about it like that. I've always thought like, oh, this is fun, you know, you see former students, and this and that, and your kids' friends that they play on other sports leagues with, or whatever. But to think about it from that perspective, that no one else has the opportunity to do something cool like that. So I thought I would share that. It was, it was a different way to look at the game, and we had a great time. Happy birthday, Deputy Doug. And that's all I have.
All right. Again, happy birthday. We are so grateful for Deputy Doug and all his leadership for so many years. So thank you for being here tonight, and every day that you are here as well. And East-West game, again, it was so fun to be at, and I also particularly liked that the girls won one of the games, and the boys won the other game. So we also even split the win for the night, which always makes me feel better, that nobody goes home then too distressed, 'cause both sides won. Going into Board Appreciation, thank you for our gifts, but more importantly, thank you for your leadership of this governance team, and thank you to my fellow Board members for the gifts that you have given this district. While some people believe that this is, you know, our, our full-time employee, and some days it feels like it might be, I know that, you know, this is, I view it largely as a volunteer commitment, and I am so thankful that you all have chosen to volunteer your time and energy to serve the kids of this district and this community, because I know that everyone here, in their heart of hearts, that is why you're here, to serve our students and our community. And so for Board Appreciation, I am thankful for all of you and where we are headed, and the future is very bright for Lakota. I am confident of that. So with that, I would appreciate a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, and we will not be taking action other than adjournment when we come out of executive session.
I'm just leaving all my stuff. I'm just leaving all my stuff.
You're so funny.
Kelly, I do want to leave.
Sure, I'll share the pie. Who wants a piece of pie?
The pecan? The pecan. I don't know about the pecan.
Okay, when we're done, when we adjourn, everybody can take a piece home.
I'm sorry. It's like a pecan. No, it's yours.
Did you hear Doug's like, "I'm not eating that, I lost."
No, it's really good, but it is, it's yours.
Did you say I'm gonna eat these Reese's? We're not, we're not eating your pie, Kelly.
I can't eat what I, what I owed you. Hey, I owe you $20, but I'm gonna spend 10 of it, you know?
Not if you're only cutting it for me.
I'm cutting it for you and Julie.
Oh god, Julie, now we're the problem people.
I'm cutting it for you too.
I would love a piece of pecan pie.
I know, I say pecan too, I don't know.
Pecan.
I'm sure Adam will take a piece. Adam's the human garbage, he does.
I'm gonna tell you what, everyone make sure your mics are on, please. Your bathrooms are just funny. Are we good? Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Oh, I pull us out of executive session, thank you Doug. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, thank you everyone.